We now call to order this session of the Common Council of the city of Honeyburg. Start with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Father God, thank you again for all those that are here to serve today, all the citizens that they're concerned enough about their community to be here to attend and have their voices heard. We ask that as we go into this meeting today, that our hearts may be with the citizens of Honeyburg and thinking that the decisions we made are for the betterment of this community and for their benefit and not our own, not our own benefit or our own selfish ideas, but that they indeed do serve all. For these things, we ask your son's name. May I get somebody to shut the doors that we, I know we have people cleaning and doing other things. First of all, you've all had a chance hopefully to get the minutes in our November meeting. Do I have a question to the November 26 council?
Motion should approve the minutes?
Motion should approve the minutes. I'll second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval claims? Do you have any questions on those or do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve the claims.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. First thing asking for today is we did get receive within the agenda there, you have the senior center bid. We had one bid for that. I will say that we did contact several and solicit several bids. I did get some people from local contractors called and apologized for their inability to be able to bid on the project. The bidder, the only qualified bid that we had was for Cypher Construction for $1,070, oh, there was some cents on the end of that?
No.
No, million, $1,070,000. So I don't know if you remember earlier in the year, our funds were approved to go towards that, which is 472,000. We do have two alternate sources that was voted on a little bit ago. This was utilizing TIF in the northwest and northeast areas to make up the difference, which be bring us a, with contingencies up to over 0.12 million to construct the building. Estimates we got were in the 1.5 to 1.6 range to go with the new building. So this is still a savings over that. Remember, if we're not able to get under contract by the end of the year, the 472,000 RPA funds cannot be retained by the city. It must be returned. So we, there's a lot of things we've had to go through to get to this point. It's at the end of the year and I think we're going to make it. Some of that was also with the RDC approving the sources of TIF to make up the difference. I feel it's important that we continue this project forward. Part of that reason is because we promised the seniors for about 15 years now, we're going to have a senior center and none has ever come about. I was a little hesitant on the location that we're presently at. However, with, with the group, that the amount of progress that we're seeing at the, at the old hospital location now with the improvements they've made in the parking lot and the parents, the, hopefully the possibility of existing senior housing in that area, duplex, senior duplexes down the road by a couple of developers, local developers that are looking at that. I've already purchased property and have plans to do so here in a few years. I think it's now a more viable location than it was and seniors are excited about it. Rita Reller, our senior person, she, she is very excited about it too. Just to let you know, we did, this is, this does not include fixtures or anything else. We're looking at donations. We do have some interest in making donations for those. There's no reason, Ms. County, for you to go out and buy furniture for these type of things that that's available to us. We did reduce some of the, this is kind of a bare bones. It's going to include an office. It's going to include a kitchen. It's going to include an area where they can gather and two restrooms. The basement will be used for storage. There'll be some grading on the outside to stop some of the flooding of the basement that's occurring right now. The building has no utilities and presently was not constructed in a manner to be occupied. So a lot of the costs that are going into this will be reshoring, taking some of the two by sixes, flooring, the floor joists and changing those to two by 10s. So reason for the high cost, that's what it is. But I guess what I would need is senior center bid approval, be able to sign the contract. Obviously, a contract would be approved by Phil Schneider, our attorney, as well as proper bonds would have to be posted prior to the signing and that's probably going to take about a week.
So we do have all the funding available in TIF?
With the 10%. There's enough in there even for about a 10% contingency on it, on the project. We're not, we vetted enough. I don't think we need to have any higher contingency than that.
So can private individuals still donate towards this if they want to?
Yeah. Yeah, that would go towards, any donations would go to interior items too, such as, you know, whether that be business equipment, that'd be refrigerators, those type of things.
Okay.
Because we probably have about $150,000 worth of furnishings, you know, between furniture and everything else. Somebody mentioned a fire, electric fireplace, some other things that they want to donate for.
So a motion would be in order to approve the bid of Cypher Construction in the sum of $1,070,000 and authorize the mayor and clerk treasurer to execute a construction contract subject to approval, legal approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Pam, both of you, second. We have now, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Seniors will be very thankful for that. Probably really right now, under the police department, we have change of ordinance. I know we talked about this at the last meeting and Board of Public Works. Let me bring it up here. Yeah, it's, it's really to provide for the police department salary for a sergeant.
Actually, the first one.
First one.
That's where they create the position of sergeant. As you recall, they now have the position of detective sergeant, but they want to create a position that's just supervisory, that has no detective functions with it. And so we, this ordinance would add that position. The detective sergeant would go vacant, but we, this ordinance would add a new position called sergeant. Board of Public Works approved it and recommended for approval to council.
So what I understand, he would not be able to put a detective sergeant in unless we approve?
Well, it would have to be in the budget.
Yeah.
So his, the police chief can fill these positions as he determines necessary, so long as their salaries are budgeted.
Yeah, we were trying to fill the sergeant's position, however, that sergeant was not, that person was not a detective, right? And as a result, we could not pay that person or put them in in those pay ranges. So bringing down the fact that we have a detective and a sergeant are two different people allows us to break that salary into.
Ted.
So the first one we had taken order here, we have to develop the, the position of police sergeant. That's chapter 30, mending chapter 37. So I hear motion to accept.
Motion to introduce it.
To introduce, I'm sorry.
I may have to introduce it.
We have one. We have a second.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Can we amend the rules?
You can suspend the rules. It's considered option on the same night it's introduced, provided that you have unanimous approval of the two thirds that are here.
So the motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
We have first and a second to suspend the rules, all those, and accept the ordinance on the first night, reverse reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we have to.
A motion to adopt.
Have the motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. It passes?
Yeah, bounds.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Volty.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Farren. Four I's, one absent.
Okay.
Did you resource somebody in for that position earlier?
Yeah, we did put a pay in, increase it. Can't put in their pay. That makes sense. All right, now we have to consider the ordinance amending salary, ordinance to provide for that salary for the, for the sergeant.
This falls into where the detective sergeant was?
Same, same range as what the detective sergeant had.
2024-24.
Make a motion to accept that.
Introduce.
Introduce, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll need to.
Suspend.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, adopt on the same night.
We have motion to suspend the rules, adopt.
I'll make that motion, just suspend.
All right, we have first and a second, all those in favor?
I'll second.
I could claim made it.
I made a motion 10 seconds, I guess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Motion to adopt.
Now we'll need another motion, third one.
Motion to adopt.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Pam's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bounds.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Volty.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Farren. Four I's, one absent.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. We have, so the attorney, Phil Schneider's area here, we got, first of all, we have two people here for proper residential apartment development and this is just consideration of a, for a tax abatement. You're not voting on the tax abatement tonight. You're just considering, you're proposing for that to be a part of a public hearing sometime in January probably, that we can set the date, but want to give you time to be able to, I know Ruger's got some fancy phone boards. He's got all kinds of things here. We also have Scott Steinkamp who's here, is one of his co-developers, to be able to answer any questions. Realizing that whatever, what is ever happening tonight, you're not approving this, we still, we are still waiting on engineering drawings to be able to determine discharge rates of water is probably a big one right now and some other design elements that have to be followed the UDO. I was yet to receive anything there. Just be aware that engineers that put those things together are few and far between right now and they're a little behind. We did have some preliminary reports, I think that I feel good that it can be, my biggest concern without development from the beginning was the water discharge rates and ensuring that we can keep them at or below what our present discharge rate, so we're not putting more water in faster this down there. The developers and Paul Lake and myself have been in that conversation since I believe April or May of this year around that and those plans are being developed. It cannot be approved, will not be approved without that information coming forward. So not a lot of things can be answered regarding that at this point because we don't have the final engineer drawings. We have preliminary maps and of those areas will be included to control the flow of water. But Ruger?
Well, let me, let me just preface everything by saying that developers have petitioned the city or filed an application with the city to obtain residential tax abatement for five years for residential development. In order for there, for there to be the possibility of residential tax abatement, there has to be two designations for this particular territory that Ruger is going to explain where it is. We have to, first of all, create a economic revitalization area district and that same district must also be determined to be an economic development target area. The, the standards are the same for both, whether you create one or the other or both are the same standards and you'll see those standards are set out in the, in the resolution, the declaratory resolution you're going to be asked to consider tonight. The connection with having it determined to be an economic development target area, the city's economic development commission has to give a recommendation to you that that's an appropriate designation for this area. They met last night and heard a presentation from the developers, asked questions, got reports, and they, in fact, adopted a resolution recommending to the council that you proceed with having this declared as an economic revitalization area and as an economic development target area. Now, having said all that, one of the standards that you ultimately have to find in the economic development commission has already found this, that this is area, this is an area that has not been developed and it's not, because of lack of development in the area or obsolescence, it's, it's not capable of being developed under normal circumstances in that some incentive is necessary in order to achieve appropriate development of this territory. The economic development commission found that that is the case with this property. It's been vacant for years and there's been no, no development on this particular piece of property since prior to 1900. So having said that, I, I think Mr. Ruger has, or Mr. Kirstens has a presentation.
Sure. Ruger Kirstens here on behalf of the entity submitted the SB1 for consideration of the tax payment Popular Ridge QOZB LLC. For anybody that doesn't know me, here local, have developed a lot of local projects in the community and throughout the county. So I'm not a new face to the area. I live here and work here and, and everything else. And I've got Scott Steinkamp and he is from Honeyburg, born and raised. So we're working on this project together. We could, put our heads together and came up with this great project here that you see on the phone boards, but then calling the project Popular Ridge Apartments. It's a mix of traditional style apartments and then it's got townhomes here, which would be on the south end of the track at the corner of 19th and 231. For reference, it's where the new sign that was put in there, there on the corner, all the way north up to the wood line there on top of the hill. Lincoln Drive is the existing street that's up there right now. So what this, this community is going to consist of is 24 one-bedroom apartments, 48 two-bed, 24 three-bed, 18 two-bed townhomes, 12 three-bed, two-bed townhomes with garages. So we've got a nice variety mix of different types of units. With all of that to be said, to Phil's point, developing properties in communities like this and communities like Honeyburg and others such in the same size, it makes it impossible for typical construction with modern amenities and fixtures and providing a good, a good quality product to the residents of Honeyburg at rates that they can afford to pay. So this is a market rate apartment community. It's no, there's no income-based restrictions or anything like that. Want to make that very clear upfront. This is a market rate development and we're targeting an average rental rate of 9.95. So sub a thousand on brand new apartments with considerable square footage. I believe that's pretty incredible to be able to still do that in today's world with rising construction costs and interest rates being as high as they are as well. So we're very proud to be able to offer a product like this at those rates and that's why we are here seeking the tax abatement, the five-year tax abatement on this project in order to get this done with those rental rates that is required. And also, second piece to that is, there's a program out there ready to. I'm not sure how familiar the council is with the program that was administered by the state, but our region, ROI was awarded 30 million. Of that portion was dedicated towards housing projects and we submitted this project over the summer to ROI and it advanced past multiple levels of consideration to where now is at the final level of consideration, have not heard back, but that, that grant is not possible without a local contribution and a one-to-one match from a local entity to the private developer in the project. So the great thing about the tool of utilizing a tax abatement is it's not requiring any funds out of pocket on behalf of the city to start, but it does count as the contribution towards the, the grant match. So it's really the perfect tool to pair together on development like this and with both of those all together, then a project like this comes, comes about. So I'll stop there and answer any questions that the council has. Just wanted to give a brief background of who we are, why we're here, and what the project is.
Do you have like a proposed fee schedule as to what your, like what the unit, or what the rates will be for each unit? Because I, a lot of people have come to me like that we are in need of three-bedroom housing and affordable housing. Or I didn't realize that this is market rate, not affordable housing, but I'm just curious as to what, what those units would be.
And market rate is pretty much in the definition of portable housing in Honeyburg, or one in the same.
Well, I don't think necessarily because it's not like a tax credit or a HUD deal. So it's like a market rate unit. It's not like it's income-based. So I think that.
It's, it's affordable for those that need apartments is what it's, it matches the housing study that was done for the county in 2023 of what the needs were based upon the income of those that were looking for rental properties.
To answer your question directly, we don't have the final numbers committed yet on what those three-bedroom units would be, but based on a similar product that we delivered in another community like this, those were in the 1,100 to 1,150 range.
Oh, for like a three-bedroom, a three-bedroom would be?
Three-bed, two-beds.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we're showing right now the needs for over the next seven years for apartments in the 500 to 1,500 range at about 189. And when you look the next 12 years, that's seven years, 12 years, it's like 300 units. This fits right in with that, that affordability range that's been determined. I've worked a little bit on the housing study, not as much as I did the first one, but I feel very safe with those numbers and what we saw. Lot of time was put into interviewing individuals, but also employees that are employed here locally, worked with the not-for-profits here locally, such as Tricap and Allosa and a few others of looking at new immigrants that are coming in, what are they looking for? And that's really, as well as developers. This is just an update of a previous housing study that's held true from the beginning. We do need some of those to Pam's point, under the 500 range too, there is a need for those, but I think that number's around 70 or so that we still need.
I think to, to hit on that point too, it's same adage as, you know, a new housing development where if there hasn't been, you know, new homes delivered in a community for several years, there's a lot of people living in, you know, houses that are priced in a range that a lot of other people could afford, but there's no place for that person to move, to open up that house. And in other communities that we've had existing apartments in and then built new, you know, our residents that, you know, there's a, man, I wish I had a newer apartment to step up into, you know, this is that opportunity where it's going to capture some of the existing residents here in the community and then open up some of the lower-priced apartments for the folks that would choose to live in those, so.
I think the main thing that people have said is three-bedroom apartments, at least three-bedroom, because there's a lot of blended families and so that at least the girls have room, the boys have room.
Yep.
And so when, like the, I guess I'm going deeper than what this is meant for, but like that.
I'll answer as much as I can.
The three-bedroom units, would that be in phase? Like what phase is that in? Is, are these mixed unit or mixed buildings where they have a little bit of everything?
Yeah, each building has the large, I'll just say the large buildings, because that's where we're going to start. There's six one-bedrooms, six three-bedrooms and 12 twos per building. So right away, we'll have 12.
That's on the far left.
Correct. Yeah, these, or you can, yeah.
Yeah, I would bet you the three bedrooms are going to be the first ones rented. That's usually what happens, so.
So we were very happy we developed this building design to accommodate a unit mix and again, it was received well in the community that we just completed. The lease up was fantastic and feedback from the residents was great, so.
This is same as a development in Washington, Indiana, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been to those. It's, it's received, been received real well up in Washington too. Mayor speaks highly of it.
So what's our next move, Phil? We need a motion?
Yeah, so there, it's, it's kind of a long process. Tonight, you're going to be asked to do two things. One, to adopt a declaratory resolution, just declaring that it's your intent to go forward with declaring this area as an economic revitalization area and as an economic development target area that would qualify this project for tax abatement. The, the final designation cannot be made until after a public hearing and after that public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to then, if you so choose, to confirm that, that designation by what's known as a confirmatory resolution. That would take place sometime in January or later, whatever your schedule, whatever you choose to do. The other thing you'd be asked to do tonight is to introduce an ordinance, not adopt it, but introduce an ordinance that would also designate this area preliminarily as an economic development target area. And that kind of designation is necessary in order to get residential tax abatement. Typically, tax abatement is only available for industrial, commercial type projects, but residential can be if it's an economic development target area. In this property, these resolutions find that this property meets all the tests of both an economic revitalization area and an economic, economic development target area. The finding is that it's becoming undesirable or impossible for normal development and occupancy because of lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvements or character or occupancy or age or obsolescence or substandard buildings or other factors which have impaired values or prevented normal development. So that's a, there's a, there's a bunch of phrases in there that would, that would, not all of them obviously describe this, this property, but many of them do. And so it would qualify if, if you make that finding.
The property was platted at 1,900 for development, so that gives you any indication of 124 years after it was platted, it still has been developing. That's part of the determining factor here, as well as the undesirability really of the terrain of, for development and the need to have incentives to develop that site properly to meet the RUDO standards and also the parent standards as kind of our gateway to Honeyburg here.
So you have a, in your board pack was included a declaratory resolution of the common council establishing the Popular Ridge, Popular Ridge Economic Revitalization Area and Economic Development Target Area. Again, it's just a declaratory, it's preliminary. And attached to that are various exhibits, as you'll see, that describe the project. It describes the project, it describe, it show, it has a map of the area and the parcel numbers. It has the, what's known as the SB1, the statement of benefits for all three, each of the three phases. I think maybe Ruger could describe the phases that are intended.
Yep.
And then also has this, the planning staff's, the city's planning staff's report recommending that you proceed with this. So this is just a resolution and if you choose to adopt it, you may do so by motion and second and vote.
Is approving the resolution this, is approving it tonight necessary for any reason that, like as far as continuing your application or?
Yep. Yes, well, Phil, you can start directly.
Well, they are on kind of a time crunch in order to take advantage of this regional opportunity initiative grant. Is it a grant, considered a grant?
Yes.
And so they're kind of on a time crunch to have that. In order to qualify for that grant, the developer has to not only have their own investment in the project, but they also have to show that there is community investment and community investment, a tax abatement would satisfy the community investment. But you also need to satisfy yourselves that, that what is being done here is what is needed for the community, is the appropriate development for this property and, and it's something that's desirable.
You.
Because you are going to give up tax on this, it's going to be added to the tax base, but we're going to be adding, giving up property taxes for the first five years after the, each of these phases are completed. But they, but the improvements obviously will remain on the tax base after that, so there will be tax revenue after the five years.
But eventually it'll pay more taxes it does now.
Pardon me?
Eventually it will pay more taxes than it does now.
Probably. And not only that, but I think the, the report that they provided you also has an economic impact that shows that increased residents in the city will increase our share of local income taxes. income taxes. And so it does have a significant impact, economic impact on the community, not only providing residences of the job opportunities and the income tax.
There's a direct and indirect calculations in there, but just from a property tax standpoint, over the next really 15 years, I think the numbers show somewhere, if you look page, I think 17, you can see that it almost doubled.
Definitely.
17 will show the capture of future funds. There you go. That one there, it has yellow on the other page. Now that 1.7 million, 661,000 is essentially what we could see the capture between now and that 2020, 2028, excuse me, 48 time period versus what we're capture would be about half of that is what we would capture during that same period on a vacant piece of property. So at that time, that is the difference. I don't think there is a deadline now of getting things done. I don't think that we should make decisions based upon that deadline tonight with this. I think too that, I think that this should fall on its own merit. Ready funds are going to be very important. The decisions you make tonight will determine probably whether they're ready funding to be able to go forward with this. And I've been in conversations with our regional opportunity issues and other people regarding this and other projects. There are other housing projects they're looking at. This is a finalist, a lot of them kicked to the side. Two reasons it was a finalist, people in Huntingburg, Indiana get things done and they want to make sure that this project is completed and because half of their projects that were funded last round have never broken ground. Developers have gone bankrupt. They are, the developer here is a previous recipient of some of those funds. That project's almost completed in Jasper.
It's done rented.
It's done now. It's at 100% rental, I guess, at occupancy, and some haven't even broken ground yet. So that's another reason that they're finalists. And also the fact that the city has been, city support will be really the, that's the one thing that will set this aside from other development. The money will go somewhere. They'll develop somewhere. It's just where they're going to develop here or another town. I say that these developments, the city doesn't do a whole lot that makes funds, but anything it does that increases our population, increases our wealth in our, our community and the value of our community, so.
When, when is your estimated completion date for the phase one?
For phase one, estimated completion would be in, depending on when we can get started. If everything goes smoothly through the meetings that we have planned out, we would plan to be leasing in June of 2026.
That's breaking ground in March of this year or spring of this year?
So when do you think, when do you want the abatement to start? I mean, does it start in '24? I mean, starting, or is that after the first building built or?
For each phase completed.
That's when you, that's when the five years start? Each phase, when each phase is completed, the abatement starts for the first tax year after completion. So there'll be, depending on, if there's three phases, it'll be three different start dates. Okay. But they'll, but they'll be limited to five years for each phase.
You look at the premier properties demonstration, it'll show you because taxes are paid in rear, page 17, it will show you the breakout of when those abatements will be in effect. There are the arrows that's in, it's the areas that are in yellow on page 17.
Okay.
You'll see page one, phases one, two, and three, how those will be phased in. So actually, you were looking at 2035, you know, on the final phase. One thing I noticed, and I did notice this afternoon, Russell's showing those, the taxes paid at a flat rate at today's dollar.
Yeah.
There will be some, probably some inflation in those amounts.
No.
They won't be, they won't be at that amount every year. That doesn't take into account the rise in the value, the market value of those and the amount of taxes that we collect are probably going to be substantially higher now. This is really pretty modest estimates that I see on that.
And I think another note that I want to overlook, and we hit on it a little bit, and that's the direct and indirect local tax revenues that you'll see on page 22, that bottom line. You know, that's saying that the bold numbers in the bottom, if this project does not happen, then that's what will not be added to the local tax revenues in Huntingburg. You get what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know that's kind of a, we focus on property tax, you know, values, but one that a lot of people overlook and miss is the total local tax revenues that come from having that many new residents, that many new people working and living and buying things in the community. It all adds up to a pretty large number at the end of the day.
Sure. So we need a motion to accept this resolution?
Eventually. I still have a few more questions.
Okay.
Sorry. Didn't we, Phil, you have to refresh my memory, but I think it was in 2018, 19, we were looking at another project, and didn't we make entire 231 corridor, like a block on each side into an economic revitalization area that?
We made it an economic development area, and the purpose of that was possibly to make it a TIF area and to do TIF allocations, but that's never going forward. There was some possible funds that might have been available for that back during Mayor Spinner's administration, but that just didn't materialize.
Okay.
And that has nothing to do with this abatement yet.
Gotcha, okay. And then, do you guys, do you expect that the, sorry, the tax abatement would be all of what you're expecting or your hope is that the city will contribute to this project? Is that the extent of it?
We have to bet for the ready funds.
Too. Correct.
The two work together.
But on the city's behalf, the abatement is what we're requesting, along with approvals that will be coming in, future meetings on just the site itself and the drainage we alluded to, but as a monetary portion contributed to this, that's what we're asking.
Okay. My questions are kind of, I don't remember seeing this in my board pack until this afternoon. And so I haven't had a lot of information or any information until today, and so this is all kind of new to us. But, so we're approving the, you getting approval for the Regional Opportunity Initiative is dependent on us approving the two ordinances that are in front of us tonight, right?
Yeah.
But I would just leave that, as Mayor alluded to, I would leave that aside. Yes, this does, does play into that heavily, but looking at the abatement itself in the project for the betterment of Huntingburg, I would focus on, on that piece there. Because without, you know, without it, then really there is no, there is no project in short, so.
So any vote tonight is saying that this is an area that should, not only needs to be, or has been difficult to develop, that's the first resolution with the ERA, target area is one, you're really saying that this area needs to be the area to concentrate on for development. So you're not, not approving any abatement tonight, you're not really approving the development tonight.
Too.
Either one, at this point, you're just saying, okay, there's a strip of land that's been very difficult to develop over the last 124 years since it was first platted, and we should be able to provide tools in order to make that happen. And so that then becomes, and Phil can correct me if I'm wrong, and that is really the purpose of the economic development target area, of saying we're going to make tools available to develop the area after that now. We recognize that it's hard to develop, now we got to, we're going to put some tools available there, but you're not going to really approve those tools this evening.
You're not approving tonight. This is just, this is just a preliminary, essentially you're saying go forward with the project, proceed with it, and we'll consider final adoption at a later point after a public hearing.
We've got to consider engineering, we've got to consider whether we do abatements, and those will all be public hearings, they'll be involved around that, except for not the engineering, those will be a report that we do, we'll file separately as a staff report based upon engineering feedback that we get.
Same that Pam said about affordable housing is very true. That's a very hard definition to fill, what is affordable housing? The point that Ruder made earlier, like it can be underestimated, that you have people moving out of 500 and 600 dollar apartments, moving to 1,000 dollar apartments, this will open up probably a third of our current units into those price ranges.
And at any time, there's at least 40 units that shouldn't be inhabited in the, in the city that we have no place for them to go to. So it's, it gives us an opportunity to move into those units that probably shouldn't, that shouldn't need to go by the wayside.
I still think in five years when this is done, we're still under housing in town.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
You can't grow unless we get housing, and that's all types, because it's a start, because it's not been a private project, market rate in the city since I can't remember, I can't remember besides duplexes, and that's a different animal there.
This will be the nicest apartments in Huntingburg when they're done, as far as that number. You might have one or two here and there, but.
Do you guys, do you guys ever have any kind of figures on, like on previous projects in our community or others? What percentage of, like when you achieve full occupancy on a, on a project like this, what percentage of those are sort of a reshuffling of existing residents versus new residents that come to the community because of those units or jobs in the area and they're looking for a place to stay? Would it be 50/50, 60/40 or?
Not quite that high. We, because we, pretty much where we develop new is where we've got existing properties in, so we've got a lot of data on that. And there's no real trend that we can follow on like an exact percentage, but in a property like this, you know, you could, it all just depends on the current circumstances. But in, let's say, in Jasper, where we just completed the one that Neil alluded to, yes, just from our own communities alone, we maybe had five or six people step into what was a 64-unit development, but then we had others where there was less and others that there was more. It all depends at that time. So I don't have a direct answer for you on that one. It's a round answer, but it does happen, but not quite to the, not quite to a 50/50 level. That would be very shocking to me if that was the case.
I can't tell you, but we're saying the same thing, even though we're full of resilient concept on calls.
Oh, man.
Yep.
Right now, it's estimated right now, based upon our trends right now, that next 12 years, Huntingburg can grow by as many as about 743 people if we have the housing available for them. If not, we won't grow, so to that point, you know, it's, that's the number.
Well, just for me personally, I, I love the idea that, that first you guys are interested in developing a project like this. Both of you have been friends to Huntingburg for a long time, and I certainly don't want to stand in the way of, of the first phase of your application not being approved because we couldn't get around to getting something like this done. I, you know, I try to ask a lot of questions because as soon as this hits the paper, people are going to be asking us a lot of questions. It's really helpful.
Oh, absolutely.
It's helpful for us to, to say that we've asked questions and we have.
The vocal minority will come after you.
Yeah. But, but I, you know, it's fantastic, I think, for Huntingburg that, that there's an interest in developing a project like this. So we just have to take it a step at a time.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I guess you guys will be back at a future, future meetings to keep us posted.
File engineering stuff.
We, you know, I'd say when we started meeting, actually back in January, even prior to me becoming the mayor even, I've been talking about this project in radio interviews and other interviews for a long time. Now we got to this point, I mean, I asked, I think it's maybe two or three weeks ago for these financials that you see on pages 17 and moving forward from, they make those available to us, they did have those available to us. I ended up getting them last week, I guess here, but it took a while to put it together, and I apologize for the board faculty. I told you today it was in there and found out it wasn't. I assumed it was, so I apologize for that. Numbers are here. You know, frankly, the first six pages are, is marketing this, this project to you. I think when we get down to the real numbers, you're looking at these five, six pages near the end of the total impact, and it becomes a little bit easier decision to make when you look at the economic impact of City of Huntingburg. But not only that, the, the fact that we can have at our gateway a development that we're proud of, can chill off this city. It's a lot better entrance than we have anything to the South Side, I can tell you that. And I live on the South Side, so that's it.
One thing, I think Huntingburg tends to under sell, so, because I remember when the new housing Stella Way went in, that I only heard it was negativity, that, oh, it won't grow, blah, blah, blah. We've got to go. I remember when we did Chestnut Gardens, people won't pay 13 or 14 hundred dollars for rent. Okay. Over 55, and they did. It's just a living. They'll go to Jeff Jackson, those fall. So I, I think we tend to underestimate ourselves. I think that we're holding ourselves back sometimes, not necessarily you guys, but I think over the decades, not believing ourselves enough. I think you just got to build a little kunk sometimes, you know?
I enjoy watching the older people move in Chestnut Garden and the younger people go into their old homes.
Yeah, and there'll be, there'll be need for that, more of those in future years.
I can give you several cases on that that occurred, so.
It's, it's been fun over the last few years watching your Chestnut Street project fill up and reach maximum occupancy, and then I heard those same stories about stellar, stellar, Hunter's Crossing, they'll never fill, and now they're what, five properties away from being completely full. They're rebuilding their last ones, and so I agree with what you say, Scott, and I appreciate you mentioning that. I think, I think there's, I, I have faith that you guys wouldn't be putting a project, proposing a project.
No, they have signatures.
You've clearly done, you've got the data to know that you're, these are not going to sit empty for the next 10 years waiting for people to move in. And so there is a need, and we'll watch it the same way over the next few years, we'll watch them fill up, just like we have the last projects.
And one of the best things at Chestnut Gardens, and I really listen the same way, is how many times do we drive through that, thinking of the place, how ugly that whole place looked, that piece of property, and now look how it looks? And I think that piece of property in the north end will be the same feeling as you drive by, and it looks as an asset to the community and not a blank hill.
As Neil said, it's our gateway community coming in, it's going to look nice. Be a big improvement over what we have.
Absolutely. You're getting more people, opportunities, and choices to move around the town. I mean, you know, if we can continue on with this and possibly, and continue on with others, you know, behind the hospital or whatever, it's, it's a, it's a good feeling, it's a good.
Don't overlook the pickleball courts either.
I know, I was laughing about that.
Is that a football right there?
No, that's a pickleball court. There's two pickleball courts right here.
That'd be fine.
Popular demand, popular demand for residents, we decided we had enough space to fit it in there, so.
You'll put a guard on it so people don't have the property number.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll have more bills by then, as we say. So we still need consideration.
Motion to accept the resolution?
Declaratory resolution 2024-25, is that correct?
That's correct.
2024-25, yeah. I'll make that motion to adopt resolution 2024-25.
I'll second it.
We've got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Pass on the first. Now we have to consider ordinance, what is 20?
This would be ordinance number 2426, correct, Tom?
Right.
And tonight, you're just, you can only introduce it, and it's an ordinance that would designate upon adoption, upon final adoption, this territory as being an economic development target area as recommended by the Honeyberg Economic Development Commission last night. And again, this designation is necessary so that, so that the developers can receive residential tax abatement for residential improvements. It is an ordinance that makes the finding that it is a property that is not capable of normal development due to its sitting vacant for a number of years, that it doesn't exceed 15% of the total territory in the city, that at least 20% of the units will be available to low or moderate income individuals. Now, that doesn't mean subsidized rent, it just means that they're going to be priced such that moderate income people can afford them, single bedrooms, the double bedrooms probably will fit very nicely into that category, and at least 20% of those in the total development. So then, so this ordinance you would introduce tonight, and also after it's introduced, we would set a hearing date, a public hearing. a public hearing date for the council to conduct a public hearing on both the confirmatory resolution that was necessary to confirm the, the economic development area and also on this ordinance to designate this as an economic development target.
We need to introduce twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
I can make the motion to introduce twenty-four, twenty-six.
And, okay. And we have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So do we need to set a meeting?
Do you need to set a hearing date? I'm not sure, first January meeting or second January meeting? Do you have to have at least a ten day publication?
I think our schedule originally, focused on this was to occur, was going to be second meeting? Is that correct, Tom?
So first one is the seventh, or the, not the seventh.
No.
The second, fourteenth. The fourteenth and twentieth are the two councils.
Fourteenth, twentieth.
December. Yeah, fourteenth and twentieth.
With the advent of the holidays and we'd probably be better at twenty-eighth, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can hit that ten day period that doesn't include holidays and we, holidays.
So that's not going to affect their proposals.
I think we gave you the twenty-eighth as a, as a date originally.
January.
Of January?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Period date. That also gets a lot of time for public discussion after the first of the year, the holidays, when people are really making considerations in the, my suggestion, you can pick any date you want, obviously, but my suggestion is a later date just because it gives more time for discussion over the project.
Make a motion to make a public hearing on January twenty-eighth of this project.
Okay. All those.
All second.
First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we have the date set at January twenty-eighth for.
At five thirty.
At five thirty.
Here.
I'm going to give you three copies of the resolution. You'll need to, Tom will need to sign, assign it and then also approve it.
Would you like for me to sign the SB one forms now because of the ones that were submitted?
Who has the SB one forms? There's copies attached to the ordinance.
I've got the resolution. I've got three copies.
Yeah, you can, if you wouldn't mind signing them. Do you want those, Paul, or should Tom pull on today?
Oh, I'll get them from Tom. I'll get scans of them.
I got a question for you. Is that road right there, is that just a drawing of it? Is that the existing one that's out there now, right down?
That's probably Lincoln Drive.
This one?
Yeah. It don't look like that right now, though.
Okay.
It'll, it'll look much better after this project.
I mean, is that for us to do or is that your property? That's your property?
We own it now. So whenever this project's done, we're going to have it comply with current standards. And then after that, if it's accepted, it turns.
Lincoln Drive was never accepted as a city street. So now they need to bring it up to standards. We're also, it's been reviewed by.
Which ordinance?
Been reviewed by our police, our fire department. Think you'll get trucks and those type of things in there. I think they made, our chief made some recommendations on the radius of some of the turns into the, to the area. Try to change those. And I think one of them hasn't changed in that picture, but possibly could be. Right now, we can't get school buses coming around or anything. So this will be the approval to that street. He's whitest street in the city of Huntingburg.
You're white.
It'll be about, it'll be a little wider than First Street.
That'd be great.
Is about what, east of Bay, which is right now, I think the whitest street in Huntingburg other than Fourteenth. Well, thank you guys. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys for your time.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did it take your picture?
We got to keep your.
Take your.
You don't want it?
We can keep it.
Yeah, leave him.
I would have got to my truck and realized.
You would have remembered.
Say if you, if you want to leave me, leave him. But otherwise, I.
I might go to a partner tomorrow.
There you go, Neil.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
You bet. Think it'd be a good project.
We definitely need the housing.
I agree with what you said. If these guys, some of these people need housing, it is a, well, look at, as you said.
Part of what happened at Hunter's Crossing, a lot of people from Huntingburg moved in, but there's also a lot of.
Chestnut Gardens.
Phil gets, one of us missed on the third page.
We wish there was more of that.
Signature. Is it, which one is it? A declaratory resolution?
That's part of the resolution.
I think I've got.
I just think that last, the last page.
Questions on what they might see about this project or anything like that. Have you?
Yeah.
Back in May.
A little bit.
And actually.
You're missing your signature.
Project.
Is this what you're missing there?
Yes.
Financially, which.
How that was. We looked at both. We had, we brought in the superintendent's voice, Donnie. We'll, we'll have more meetings. When the final engineering comes in, we'll do it again. All right. Next on agenda is Corf Treasure Thomas Stipper.
I have nothing.
Have nothing. Any other items here from council?
I would like to ask about, Phil, you had sent out a draft ordinance, amending chapters one fifty and thirty-four of the, of the Huntingburg Code of Municipal Ordinances relating to hoarding. This was, this was, so sorry, it was emailed from Phil about a week ago, I believe. So I've had a chance to review it. And I don't have, I don't really have any.
Oh, it's not, you know.
Particularly any issues with any of the topics that you've addressed in here. I would assume that this is maybe kind of started out as standard hoarding, maybe copied from other towns that have.
Well, I, I've not found any, any really extensive ordinances that deal with hoarding. Mrs., I'm sorry, Janet Schnell, Mrs. Schnell gave me a website from the State Board of Health. That website was not very helpful because that website just said, we can't control hoarding. You can contact the state fire marshal's office or the local, or your local communities can regulate it. Hoarding is not an easy thing to regulate. First of all, in many cases, what we consider hoarding could very well be a mental illness. The other thing that makes it difficult is that it is, deals with property rights. And so government has to have a compelling interest in order to restrict people's rights to own and control property. So what we consider as hoarding is usually excessive clutter of personal property laying in, around in people's yards and properties and in their houses and on their improvements. And if we're going to prohibit that type of conduct, it has to be, somehow be tied to the public safety and welfare. So that's what this ordinance attempts to do, is to tie the excessive collection of clutter and items of tangible personal property to concerns for public safety and welfare. It's still not going to be easy to enforce. It's, it's going to be very subjective judgments as to whether or not this accumulation or that accumulation is really affecting the public welfare. But it's, this, this is at least a tool that can, we can use to begin addressing some of these issues when they, when they surface.
So it's not really addressing our desire for property to look a certain way, as much as that, that clutter may be causing a health risk or have a risk to the neighborhood outside of just the parents, you know? I mean, I like figurines in yards, you know, those type of things. And how far do you control that or how far you can? Takes that to be very clear that, no, that is what this hoarding thing is about. It's more that, that that's a harborage for some health risks that may be a threat to you. That's really portion a lot of it. It's hard to, it's hard to prove property value decreases without somebody coming in and actually appraising properties with and without junk, you know? How do you, how do you make that final determination? That's why it's difficult.
Even then, if, if it's, if it is a condition which affects the value of your property, that's more a civil problem between two property owners. And, and it could rise to the level of the person collecting the clutter being, causing a civil nuisance. And so their adjoining landowner, the person who's affected, can bring suit in a civil area to, to enjoin that, that nuisance. What, what municipal government can do is address it from a public health, safety and welfare standpoint, if it in fact does adversely affect the public health, health, safety or welfare.
So we've all watched a show on TV that, that, that kind of addresses this issue. We've all seen properties be actually condemned by local governments because of the safety that it would, or the, the danger that it would pose if there were a fire to, to our own firemen and their possibly inability to, to save someone or for them to be trapped in, in that building. But you had addressed that with me, that we're in Indiana, those shows are filmed in other states. Can you talk about that?
Well, no, well, actually, this ordinance would, would address that. I mean, if, if the, the clutter in fact does represent or present a, a threat to the safety of emergency response personnel, then it's something that would violate this ordinance and we could use the ordinance to, to have it abated. But there has to be a finding. I mean, it has to be, it has to be supported by the facts that this presents a, a true public health or a risk to emergency response people or to the public health and public welfare, public safety.
Really right.
And every, every situation is going to be a little bit different. They're going to be very fact sensitive.
Well, you mentioned public health, and I was thinking, a lot of these places could, could house creatures, rats.
Vermin.
Anything like that. That's what bothers me. You know, years ago, when we, we talked about this, it's like, I, I don't want to sit there and own a piece of property and neighbors move in next door, like I do, and they, they either stack their cars up, they do whatever, we, you know, or do the hoarding thing. Well, that just, even though the value that the, the bank gives on what that house is worth, it doesn't mean that you're going to give that if you wanted to buy my property because that's where you're at. And that, that affects me. That affects the homeowner. And I see Janet's case, you know, if they wanted to sell that house, you know, the bank would say that house is worth X amount of dollars and then, but who would want to come buy that because the neighbor's, neighbor's property is cluttered up or full or, you know? And we have to start somewhere. And I think, you know, we're looking at this, even at the penalties, you know, you got fifty dollars for the first time, when does the second one come in effect? You know, you give them so many days, I think maybe Paul can explain.
Yeah, the way, the way it's, and, and this is just a first stat. The way it's addressed is that if it's determined that a property owner or occupant is violating the ordinance, they're given a notice to, to abate the violation within thirty days or however, whatever number of days is appropriate. If they don't, then they're issued a ticket, each, it is an actual fine, a fifty dollar fine. Each day thereafter that it continues past that thirty days is a separate offense. And each day, a hundred dollars gets added on to it. Now, there's a, there's a limit. I can't, I think we can't go beyond seven thousand five hundred dollars in fines, civil fines.
Okay.
But, but before it got to that point, if, if the property owner was in fact in violation of the ordinance, and we issued the notice, we issued the citation, we issued the fines, and they were not cooperating, we would bring an action to, for an injunctive relief in the courts to get a court order to require them to bait it.
Because I was thinking like the third.
Because fines, fines don't help. They don't bring in a lot of revenue. It's not, it's not, it's, it's a tool to help get people to comply, but.
Well, I'm looking at the third if that's a hundred dollars. I mean, it's cheaper to just pay fines and not do nothing.
Not, not for a hundred dollars every day.
Oh, is it daily rate?
Every day that, every day that it continues past the thirty day notice is a separate violation.
Okay. Because I was thinking, it might be cheaper for them just to pay their bill versus paying a place to rent, you know? But I get it.
I feel like this is kind of subjective, like as to what is considered hoarding. So who makes those decisions as to what, I mean, is it something, I know that there was an instance in the past where the fire department wasn't able to go into a home because of hoarding. So is it where the fire chief is going to go in and say that this home isn't safe, that we wouldn't send firefighters in? Or how are we gonna?
There would be one example. That would be one way.
It's work both ways. We have had a residence tore down in the city because of.
Right.
Back on Washington Street, Phil may remember, several years ago. It took us quite a while to get that done with the county health department and everything else, but we finally got it tore down. And an incident not long ago, as you just mentioned, that firemen knew from residents not to go in, and the building came along over there because it caught fire. So, and that could happen anywhere, you know, in this hoarding. Firemen are not going to put their lives in jeopardy if they can't get in and protect themselves. They're not going to go in. It's, it's a surrounded ground. So that's their call at the time, but hopefully that comes in the pre-plan.
Well, I, I would, I would hope that it would be something that's like, okay, this is to, I mean, I don't know. I think it's, it's a fine line between like an invasion of people's privacy or their, you know, but then also too, that if you're for the safety of, of the firefighters or of people that are, you know, that don't want to put their life at risk either. So it's like, how, where do we draw the line? Do we, do we have people have inspections? Or is there something like where it's like, I mean, people turn other people in? Or how, how does this work?
If it comes to the attention of the code enforcement department, and Paul could probably answer this, but his, his policy, his practice generally is to try to work with the property owner or the occupant, point out the violation, give them a chance to, to try to correct it. Then if, if after a reasonable attempts, there's no, there's no progress being made, that's when the notice, the physical notice to actually do it within a certain time period is issued. And after that time period, if there's no progress or sufficient progress isn't made, that's when the fines start in daily.
It's, it's primarily, the current ordinance we have, and it goes back to the mid-nineties long before I even was here. We're dealing primarily with the exterior of the structure. We don't do anything inside from the code enforcement point of view because in order to go inside, I have to see the violation from outside. We've had four or five properties that it has taken three or four years. Two of them have made visible signs of project. The one that most are probably thinking about have three properties. It's taken fourteen months to get one of the properties and all the stuff that was in the outside, in the backyard, covered up with carts and that cleaned up. Generally, once we notify them that there's an issue, here's what the issue is, we will ask them to contact us, the property owner. And we will work with them if they're making visible signs of progress. And we give them usually every two weeks or every four weeks, we're going to meet with them, sit down, look at what progress has been made. In some cases, it doesn't work and we start ticketing them. And that's not worked, which is why we, we had asked Phil and the mayor and I have discussed it, is trying to take our old ordinance, modernize it and get it condensed a little bit so it's a little easier to work with because our old ordinance has got stuff scattered all over. It still doesn't address the mental side of it. And it still doesn't address what's inside the structure unless police, emergency management or the fire department come to code enforcement and say, hey, there's an issue. Now with Donnie Heim in the position he's in now, that makes it dramatically easier. The police have been very good about letting us know, alerting us when there's a problem. And there's at least one of those properties that I'll have discussions with somebody after the first year about possibly starting a condemnation process on.
For those people that are really trying, they've been very fair. I know Chief Heim worked with a family on the South Side that a family members came in weekly and filled a dumpster. And that continued for several weeks, filling that out until they got it cleaned out. After the fourth dumpster, I wondered what it was like inside the house. But they continue making progress. The family worked with the person that was inhabiting the home. the home in order to clean it up and bring it back. And some of the people that we have as hoarders now, I've spoken to their families and their relatives of what can we do or what can you do to affect it from a mental health standpoint of what can we do with your sister or your brother that this is happening. So we've taken a human approach to this too, but we also need to remove, we got to be able, you know, and Phil and I probably look at it to say, whatever decision we make, we need to be able to defend ourselves in a court of law too, you know, but to Pam, Pam made an excellent thing is what, who's, who's making that decision? How's that decision made? The ordinance needs to be clear and spell that out. So we're consistent with the decisions we're making. Because you're right, Pam, it's, I don't apply quotes in my neighbor's yard, but it doesn't break. There's nothing in the ordinance against it.
Well, and I think it makes me feel a little bit, if it's on the outside of their house, it's not like we're going into other people's houses, which you would assume then too, if with Donny being in the position he is with code enforcement, that then could take a step further as the fire chief to potentially maybe just reach out to them and say, hey, if there would be an issue.
When the hoarding is in the inside, there is no choice to be made with the fire department other than stand outside and don't let it spread to the home next to you. The last time that occurred, they were so exhausted from the heat and the fire that we did have to ask Jasper to come over and assist with firefighters just because they saw, realize that our firefighters will sometimes work all day at their regular job and they come and fight a fire at night. And by the next morning, they're done, you know, they've been up and we do, we have had, but in no way will the firefighters go into those homes.
May I address the board, please?
What's that?
May I address the board?
Sure, sure. We're going to give you time and here we have it on here.
Well, you actually came across a couple of areas that I wanted to address. The hoarding policy is not hoarding. Here's Jasper's. And it's actually public, that's at the bottom of the page, Tim. They don't address it as hoarding, they address it as something safety. This is the information with the highlights for the state of Indiana with the hoarding. And actually HUD has a checklist to identify what hoarding is. And so you can use the HUD recommendations. Jasper also has the three people who are instrumental in deciding what is hoarding. So it's a three-person group that comes in and defines that this is a problem that this can cause. So as you guys are discussing things, there's a lot of protection, it seems like with the property that's a problem, but where's my protection? You know, when you talk about, you know, we don't want to send the firefighters into the house, I get that. But then that means that fire can spread to my property. And I know they'll do everything possible to save it, but, and then the other thing is we talk about the mental health aspect, you know, the hoarding is a disease, a mental health disease, but what kind of impact are we putting upon our firefighters when they have to go to a house they can't save? So we have to really look at the impact, not only with the person themselves, but what kind of, what's happening to our community that is affecting other people. And so I really was coming tonight because I was going to ask about fines. Well, first of all, I was going to ask you where you all were last week because I was here. I had the wrong week. So I'm back. But I had a question about the fines. Phil, you did help to describe that as a weekly. Now, was the fine based upon each area of focus, as in the car, the vehicles that are filled with debris and whatever that they can't drive? Is that a separate fee fine?
It's really up to the code enforcement officer to determine whether or not there's a separate violation in that vehicle or is this a separate violation on the front yard or on the porch or inside the house. I think typically what is done is one violation, it's considered one violation. And if they get cooperation, that's great. If not, then we get a little bit stricter. We start.
If the vehicle's on the street though, we can't touch it. Code enforcement can't touch it. Ask the police department.
Police department can have total. And just because it's filled with debris, they do drive them that way.
Correct.
And I appreciate, I've looked at Jasper's, it is not a perfect system there either.
Right.
My previous jobs, I would get calls frequently from their fire chief and other people of what they can do because they, they end up with the same, they end up with the same orders there and same situations that they, they have a hard time addressing.
So has Donny had a chance to look at this, to provide feedback or, you know, his thoughts?
I haven't heard back from him. I.
Yeah, he's looked at it. We haven't, we have a, we're having a meeting set up with that. And I talked frequently with Jasper, I know, and he works with their fire chief closely to all these types of situations. So it's not execution, the ordinance is easy to roll, executing the ordinance becomes a gray, too many gray areas a lot of times. I want to fix as you do. Our fire department wants it fixed. Yeah, hoarding insights, a big concern, you know, with our fire department. It's a big concern with emergency personnel being able to get in. We've had homes that they've not been able to even get down the hallway to get to somebody that's fallen and get them out of them. We've had all those. So.
Even getting access to a door to bring someone out.
Getting access to the bedroom. That person that left the bedroom.
That's all addressed in this draft ordinance. Any of these situations we're talking about that would affect public health, safety or emergency response people is all addressed in here. What it's not going to do, and what many people are upset with is my neighbor's got 13 flamingo, plastic flamingos and 17 birdbaths and all kinds of yard ornaments and it's detracting from the value of my property and it probably is, but we can't, we can't regulate people's, people's aesthetic values. We can regulate if it affects the public health, welfare and safety. And that's what this ordinance is intended to.
Yeah, right. And that's why it's changed to instead of hoarding, it's identified as public safety to address it that way instead of, like you said, what would be pretty for one, not for you, but others.
Yeah. So not making value statements here. It's actually health concerns, self and safety concerns.
Correct.
There seems to be, I've had several conversations with various people about in the interest of the safety of a renter in town, that we, we right now don't have the ability to inspect rental properties. If we did, at some point in the future, have an ordinance that would, that would give us the ability to do that. And let's say one person owns three properties or four properties in town. Phil, to your experience is that, is it possible to have three residences or would one be a residence and the other ones be subject to like a rental ordinance that would allow inspection?
I'm not sure what you're saying. So.
All right.
They're all three, three apartments are all three residences.
So you're allowed to have one state that you live in, right? You, I can't be a resident of Indiana and Florida at the same time. So within Huntingburg, if I owned three properties, I wasn't renting them to anybody, but I owned three. And we had a rental ordinance or ordinance that allowed us to inspect rental properties on a regular basis, say once a year, once every three years or something, for things like fire safety for their tenants, right? Smoke detectors and, and clear pathways and no padlocks on doors, those types of things. If you, if I owned three properties in Huntingburg and I was, but I wasn't renting any of them out, can I count all three as my residence or is only one of my residence and would the other two be?
Those inspection ordinances would only address properties that are either rented or being offered for rent. If they're not being offered for rent or they're not rented, then, then they're not considered rental properties. They may have other violations. They may have unsafe building violations. So we have unsafe building ordinance. We have property maintenance ordinances. They may violate other ordinances. But, but if they're not rental properties, then we couldn't go in and inspect them under the guise of a rental inspection ordinance.
And a lot of times they don't consider those homes. They consider those storage buildings. And as a result of that, and if they're in the business of selling those, it's my contention that they could be considered maybe citizens' business properties, but that's not the way that we're set up in the state of Indiana. To do so, we can all have our opinion on that. But I know where you're going with this. And because we do have people that have, we do have more than one hoarder that has multiple, I know of at least a couple in the city that have multiple buildings from residences that they store stuff in every one.
And they, so if you get a violation, they end up taking the stuff that's one property to the other properties. So while they're doing this, they are consistently shifting the hoarding problems to a different property. It's not really solving the problem.
Well, I see it boiling down to two things, Janet. One, we have to have the teeth in the ordinances and the laws to stir it up, right? But secondly, it really needs to be the will amongst the council and city employees and, and the community to stop it, to put an end to it, to, to make it uncomfortable for people to, to do this, right?
I think.
And, and so it's going to be a combination of that. But I think the first step is for us to, to pass an ordinance that everybody can agree on that's going to give us the teeth first. Then we have to, then we have to decide how, how aggressively we enforce that and how far we want to push it to, to get compliance, you know? And just the fact that we have one might, might gain some compliance with some people, you know, without even having to stir the pot. But some might dig their heels in and then we have to have the will.
I think, I think Phil took a huge step forward with this proposal.
Me too. I like him too.
I will tell you that Chief Heim, Paul Lake and myself are very excited that this, this is there. And I think maybe, I don't know if we've had discussions, but the rental inspection, there are three things that are laid out to Phil and to Paul Lake and Donny Heim that I want to make sure that we get it placed by next year. One of those is for hoarding in there. Rental inspections are some limitations on rental properties. There are probably 60, 70% of the rental properties are exempt from inspections based upon the state statutes that allow it to. But it's that probably half of that agreement, 30% are the ones we're really worried about. If you, if you think about it, it's not the people that we're presenting tonight. It's, it's others. The, the, really the, so those were two of the biggest things really right now. Third thing is what, Paul? A combination of vacant properties that are, that have been sitting. And I'll just say it here, we have.
There are at least four or five.
Yeah, we have at least a couple between Sixth and 12th Street and on 231. And we need to continue making that a priority of getting rid of those. And whatever ordinances or teeth we need to do to make sure we can get them out of there, make it uncomfortable for them to keep ownership of the buildings, we need to because it is detrimental to our growth. It is detrimental to our.
It's not a quick process, condemnation. Generally, it's going to take a while. But dot all your i's, cross your t's, you'll end up being successful with.
We have 10 properties that we're looking at moving on, 10, I guess we're at right now.
Yeah.
Next year for condemnation. Those would be nice properties to build new homes on. But we're looking at maybe 18 month process.
Yeah.
Just following statutes. You got to understand that the, the most powerful lobby at our state legislators, our realtors and people of the property, that rent property, and they've made it very difficult for us to institute a lot of combination things. I've, I've been to the state house, I've testified before the committees and I've got an 80% vote and it goes to another committee and they won't even bring it up for a vote because of the power of the lobbyists that are there. So that's, that's it, you know, it's, and I'm not about to give up with it. I'm in frequent calls too with Attorney General's office on things that we can do regarding housing and what we can do there. So it'll be, it'll be a first year in as mayor, second year will be these concerns that we're really looking at that we've mentioned today. And we'll have frequent meetings and discussions regarding how we can make it go cleaner and faster. But the dedication to making it happen is not a lack of, right now it's a lack of teeth, you know, within our present ordinance since being able to enforce it.
I will say, addressing the mental health part, your only responsibility that you all could even possibly do is just hand them, hand people a resource sheet to say, here are the mental health services in Du Bois County and around, around the community so that they know that they have resources to reach out for mental health help. I do want to thank the board because you guys have been fantastic, offered advice to me. I followed up with the advice that was given. So I do thank you and I appreciate the approach. You, me being able to approach you and not feel intimidated or feel like you're not, I'm not being hurt. I really do appreciate that part. So anytime you guys have any questions, I have talked to Donny about, you know, how can we best facilitate this? What do you need from us? And so we've had that as an open discussion.
Well, we appreciate you, Janet, and really truly do. And I thank you for, for being here and maybe prodding us along a little bit, realizing that we have a lot of priorities in our life and in our jobs. And sometimes we shove some things to the side for now and, and maybe did get, I think I got shoved aside for too long. But we've already made that a major goal for next year is to strengthen those three things. There's buildings I want to see gone. There's buildings all of us would like to see gone. There's, there are homes that we'd like to do, see improved. But on the other end too, we need to provide all resources to our residents in order to be able to live and stay here. And if there's ways that we're going to be working very hard next year to make sure we have the mental health resources available to our own employees and, and make that a, that a priority too in the next, in the coming years. I'm not adequate to be able to handle all those things, but we know within the house, we can do that. And I am on the health department board that kind of over, puts together the county's health wellness plan. So we've had some discussions around that and got an email while I was here from the health department wanting to assist us through this process, which forwarded on to Paul Lake. So hopefully the county is wanting, we'll work together through county and otherwise too.
And I can send you our referral resource sheet that we've used so that you can also have that on file. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks, Jan.
Good job.
We have any, any other items?
Both of you.
I do have a question.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was for the people out there. Do we have an ordinance against panhandling?
You're too dumb.
Is that something you guys, there was a recent incident this weekend with panhandling in town. And I think that there are enough resources within our community between, I know there's a, I think a transient fund at the police station and they're shared abundance. It seems like there's a need for panhandling, but if we.
They, they do have, they were, the gentleman was given resources. He was asked to leave private property that didn't allow him to do. He was monitored. He didn't approach anybody over a two hour period. I even walked by him to see if he approached me. He wouldn't. So we felt a little bit better about it. I did come back and ask him if he needed help with anything. He showed me a big stack of bills that he collected. He had more money in his wallet than I had. So he felt like he was in good enough shape to make it to Mount Carmel, Illinois. And that's where we left it. He did have a tent set up in one of our parks, which was removed.
So how hard is it to throw an ordinance like that on the books just to give us again the teeth that we needed to?
I don't know. I guess. Yeah, we have to draft one, have to research a little bit, find out what we can and can't do. In the past, it's, it's been somewhat of a delicate situation because we used to have, I think we talked about this at lunch, we used to have clubs, organizations that would, would panhandle at stoplights, you know, essentially, and, and collect money from donations for good causes. But if you have a panhandling ordinance, it has to be enforced uniformly against all people and organizations.
Well, could it be that we have an exemption for 501(c)(3)'s?
Again, I have to look at that.
Something, I mean, like for charitable?
We just can't be discriminatory.
And I agree with that.
I have to see whether or not that's, that's discriminatory, considered to be discriminatory to just exempt some organizations and not others. I don't know. I'd look, I'd look at it.
Well, they can come and follow up a bit, possibly.
I just think that there's so, there's so many, we're, we're really blessed in this community to have so many resources. And I think that coming from Indianapolis, there's panhandlers everywhere and very few of them are using the money for food or shelter or anything. So I think that it's, if they are in need of food or shelter, we have resources for both of those, but I don't think that panhandling is necessary.
So if we get a musician standing on the street corner playing with his suitcase open, sounds that are.
So if we get a musician standing on the street corner playing with his suitcase open, sounds like they're panhandling?
That's entertainment.
I'm not sure.
He was looking for transportation money to make it back to Mount Carmel, Illinois.
Yeah.
It's where he was, it was at and there weren't resources for that, you know, I. I, I would have referred him to a couple of the churches that have some things available, but he wasn't interested in that. The, the thing about it is, is that he was at the corner. I went twice to buy fuel without him saying anything to me. And none of those, I've walked around, was, was filling up. He never made any attempt to approach me or ask me anything. Uh, the police monitored him from across the street, uh, for quite a while and never was he seen approaching anybody, so kind of let it lie. Uh, other than the fact that they told me he couldn't go into any private property there and approach anybody or he was not allowed to approach anyone. So then he, uh, and actually his sign was, says, I need a ride to Mount Carmel, Illinois, is what the sign said. People were walking over and giving him money, but he was looking for a ride to.
He was hitchhiking, essentially hitchhiking.
Yeah, he was essentially hitchhiking.
I don't think it's been.
It was kind of weird. It was kind of a weird situation.
It hasn't been an issue, right, that I know of. I mean, where we have a very isolated incident here recently. Um, but I mean, if that's something you want to address, we, I can look into it.
And we're not sure about the tent, but it seemed unusual that we saw him in the area.
It just seemed, and I don't want to be discriminatory towards anyone, but I just think sometimes whenever you open the door just a little bit, that it's like, just because we haven't had that, um, an instance before in the past, that I, I don't get a ton of phone calls, but I did get a lot of phone calls this weekend about the tent in the park and panhandling. Yeah. And so.
Police have, they have scanners, so they hear. Oh, yeah.
That's how I knew to go to the park.
So, and I think that it is kind of like, uh, we, we are blessed to live in a tight knit, that nice community. And so it's like just, uh, I don't know, just something that I think maybe we should address or, uh, look into addressing. And that's it. Now we can adjourn. I move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Thank you very much.